Box to write to us your questions. It enables us to see the questions much easier than if you use the little hand raising icon. And also, third, questions or comments that are submitted are part of the public record and are available to the public should they request to see them. So just letting everybody know that. And with that, we go to open forum. And does anybody from the board have anything from open forum? Okay. But I do have Emily. Emily Teller is out there and she would like to speak in open forum. So Eric, if you can unmute Emily.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure that I needed to come tonight because I've written Andrea and Jody. But the Friends of the Brewstream and Rail Trail would like to request that the sign that is near the kiosk currently says two point rail trail parking 2.4 miles to the north in Chelmsford be removed. Because there is now closer parking at the north Acton parking area that is specifically for the rail trail, we feel like that's misinformation. And we don't need to subject our parking to Chelmsford Hart Pond by direction. People can find it on their own if they need to. But as the people who are overseeing the signs in Westford, I thought I should come tonight just in case and check that box.
Okay. Jody, do we as a board have to do anything or can they just take the sign down?
No, I don't think so. Emily, would you like to take it down or would you like us to take it down?
I would seriously like to not be the one who takes it down. So I had already written Chip and Jim Dwayne. So I can just get back to them and have a town staff person remove it. Thank you very, very much.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure. See you later.
See you later. All right. I'm not seeing anything else for open forum. I don't think. Our next item on the agenda is just an update on the appointment of members to the DEI Committee. Applications closed on Friday afternoon. We have, I believe, 20 or 21, I think 21 applicants for the DEI Committee. Both the School Committee and the Select Board are going to be reviewing them. It is a joint appointment. So I have reached out to the Chair of the School Committee about setting up a joint meeting among us so that we can move forward with the appointment of committee members. I know they're meeting tonight and they also have a meeting scheduled for October 13th, which is our next meeting. And we're trying to see if we can perhaps organize a joint meeting on the 13th, perhaps at seven o'clock at the beginning of both of our meetings to see if we can move forward then with the appointments. So that's the update on that. Okay. Anything else? I guess nothing else to add to that. So let's move to special town meeting. And we have a request from our town moderator to begin special town meeting at nine o'clock.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Jody?
I would just like to mention that we do have Sunday at 9:00 AM as a rain date kind of planned or as a second day of town meeting. So I just want to make that public so people mark their calendars.
Thank you. Okay. So Jody, we have to sign the warrant tonight, right?
Well, since you're virtual tomorrow would be good, but you will close it. You know, it's closed, but vote it tonight. We do have a couple of changes that we'll be suggesting as we go through it.
Okay.
So if you want to wait till the end, that would be great.
All right, we'll do that. And then my question is, can we sign the warrant electronically or do you need original signatures?
You know, I meant to check on that. I'm going to check on that while you're talking.
Okay. All right. So let us go through the articles that are on our agenda tonight, starting with Article six, which is the capital article. Mark, do you want to walk us through that?
Well, so yeah, let me, I think I'll have, is Dan on? I think he is.
Yes. And Mark, I don't know if you saw today, but we did update the timeline. So we were able to show what was voted and what was continued to March. So I don't know if you want to look at that sheet.
Yeah, I've looked at it. So let me just give an overview and then I'll let Dan or you, whichever you prefer to go through it. So Capital Committee met a week ago Friday and really to review the articles that, the items that were pushed off from annual town meeting. But we also had a second objective. And the second objective was to make sure that we understood the town's cash position relative to the latest forecast and try to determine some items that that were on that list or were being asked to be added to that list that could be either deleted or deferred or changed. So with that in mind, we, we changed quite a few items, including some of the ones that were on here that were being requested to add. So I just want to recognize the Capital Committee for the hard work. We met for three hours, had a lot of discussion about several things. And at the end of the day, this number that's on the list is $677,000. But the items that we, we took off were about 540, which is a subset of the 677. So I think Dan can walk through that. But again, just recognizing the Capital Committee and trying to help the cash position of the town for this year.
So Dan, do you want to walk us through it?
Sure. So for capital, first up, we have upgrades for technology for $38,000. They had to replace some switches. Their original request is $50,000. We decided to, you know, save the 12 and just do the six switches that are in need of immediate replacement. Next up is the School Administrative Office Feasibility Study for $90,000. And we have $14,000 for the HVAC replacement at the NAB fire station. And then also for public buildings, the Permanent Town Building Committee is requesting $140,000 to, it's a supplemental to the $260,000 that was already appropriated at, let's see, the 2019 special town meeting. It's for the fire station antenna relocation and construction at a now vacant fire station. We have $33,000 for an animal control vehicle that needs replacement. The last stuff, the wastewater management, this is for the WA treatment plant, tank rehab. This was originally $200,000, but we asked if Steve could just move forward with the design at this point so we could, you know, compare the, or just delay the construction until summer, which was fine with them. They actually need to do construction during summer. So those are our capital appropriations for free cash.
Okay. Questions from the board about this? Tom?
Thanks, Mark, and thanks to the Capital Committee for, and Jody and everyone on town staff worked on this. The only thing that looked like it had some objection amongst the various boards were the School Administrative Office Facility Study. I understand why it's a good idea, I think, to move forward, but just wondering if you want to comment on, on why we decided we need to move forward on this now rather than having this pushback as many other things were.
So I'll speak to, I'll let Jody and Dan speak to FinCom because I wasn't there. But so for Capital Committee, I think there's, you know, there's this whole issue with 51 Maine, 63 Maine. And at the end of the day, we know that this is going to be a very long process and we need to, we should get started on feasibility study, whether that be combined with whatever we're planning to do with 51 or not. So it was really for Capital Committee was nothing more than the recognition that we need to get going at some point in time with doing this and pushing it off another year. You know, it's just putting more risk at the millennium. I'll let Dan and Jody talk about FinCom.
Dan, you can certainly chime in about FinCom. I mean, we were both there. There was a lot of discussion.
Sure. You know, I think the feeling from some of the members who I think are posted out there as well was that our financial outlook is tenuous at this point. We still have a state budget. And looking at the free cash analysis or projection that we had put together, I think some of the feeling was that we should delay certain projects until we know where we stand come the annual town meeting. And so that's why they're voting to delay these projects at this point.
Yeah, if I can, if I can just offer, I'm sorry, Anita. So that's what the Capital Committee did, right? It deferred several projects, both free cash as well as out of, out of bonding to provide some, some flexibility on the cash flow side. So that Capital Committee, even though it's not its responsibility to take that into, into account as well.
Anita, did you have a question? Yeah.
Yeah, I did. Just how the 90,000 number came about.
Jody?
That's an estimate that was provided by the Permanent Town Building Committee, I think, based on other feasibility studies we've done. Basically, they would look at sites around town that we owned and try to determine which site might be the best and be large enough and so on and so forth. So it's kind of an all encompassing study to make a final recommendation.
Scott, did you have a question?
Well, I guess, you know, the question is sort of one of the scope that we give that study because, you know, one of the FinCom comments was you may want to think of putting facilities and IT in that, that building. So discuss it, but you know, is it view that this is only for a school up in building or would that cost allow us to absorb, you know, a school admin plus IT plus facilities if, if we wanted to do that when the time came?
Jody?
There was also discussion that the Recreation Commission has, I think it's $100,000 for a feasibility study and whether that could be combined with a school admin look. That was discussed too.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, so I think the comments, I forgot about that point, Jody, so thank you. So the, the combination of this estimate and what the Recreation has been provided for theirs provides enough funding to, you know, we need to relook at, at all of it. And it would allow us the opportunity to, to do that and get started before July of 21, which is really when, you know, this money would be available. So if we did that now, we can begin getting the groups together to start talking about scope and so forth so we could, you know, move ahead.
Tom?
Just to be clear in asking the question, I am in favor of this. We're past the end of the design life for millennium and although I hope we can save our money and be careful, we do need a plan. And I think that's what this, this money is going to be used for.
Any other comments? Scott, sorry.
Yeah, I think to add to Tom's perspective, we learned what happens when the town hall, if you get a cast failure and you weren't ready for it. And you know, we've already had Eric do the good work to say that roof was got a very limited. So I think we would be doing our duties if we weren't looking to fix that building, you know, or replace it now because the timeframe to build these things is so long, we can't afford to lose another year.
Anita?
So I just want to make sure that I am clear on that. So the school administrative, this feasibility study is, there's been a commitment that this would be paired with the Parks and Recs feasibility study or there's just some discussion that they could be done together, maybe?
Yeah, there's been no commitment. There's a discussion. I think that's the, that's the, would be the intent. And I think if we all agree with that, we should make that the intent. You know, so.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that makes sense, you know, the, that with that amount of money that we should, you know, get the groups together and, you know, figure out exactly, you know, what the scope of any design feasibility study that we're going to do and, and what it includes before the two groups go off sort of separately and, and without speaking and coordinating with one another. Okay. Any other discussion about the capital article?
That was just part of it. There's an "and" further.
Okay, you're right. There is an "and" further. So. Dan? Dan, do you want to finish? You want to take this part, Dan?
Sure, I'll keep going. So this is the Water Enterprise capital. So all this is being paid from the Water Enterprise retained earnings. They have a SCADA system improvement, which is their operating system, a couple trucks, a dump truck with plow for $60,000 and a utility truck with plow. I'm just noticing right now that should read 57,000 right there. So I do have to update that. I apologize. And then replacement of the filter media in the Nutting Road water treatment plant for $740,000. Steve recently realized that there were a couple leases in the treatment plant. So this was originally supposed to be held off until May. However, because of the lease, it makes sense to move forward project now.
Any questions about these items?
I'll make a motion to recommend.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Anita?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. Okay.
And a second motion.
See, so this one is for the Carlisle Road sidewalk. They did come back to capital and the cost estimate has increased from 400,000 to 440,000. However, we are planning on bonding this. So the annual additional cost is not that great. It's about $5,000 or $6,000 in the increase.
And if I'm not mistaken, the reason for the increase was for just a slight extension. Correct?
I think so because didn't we extend the sidewalk a little bit?
The answer is yes.
Yeah, we went from a two side short one to one side longer one and that, that is small.
Correct.
Okay. So are there any? I guess there are no discussion. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Anita?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
I. Okay.
And a third and a fourth.
The next one.
It's the Oak Hill Moore Road and Plain Road Infrastructure Improvement Project that we had on the warrant last March and was delayed till October. The, the price tag is still at 8,160,000. We are planning to bond this project and down below in the language, you can see the funding sources for that 8.1 million. It's 2,350,000 from the Water Enterprise, 2,020,000 from the Stormwater Enterprise, and then 3,790,000 from the general fund.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes. And I believe the last one.
This is the last one. So this is a placeholder for the WA amenities building. If it's not approved through the community preservation funding as recommended in Article Five, this is our backup plan and the language in here is to actually have a debt exclusion at this point. So as you can see below, the finance committee does not recommend because in the comments you can see they recommended using CPA funds in Article Five.
Comments or questions from the, from the board? Seeing none, is there a motion?
So can I ask, I want to ask a question. It's a procedural one, I guess. So this is, when the Finance Committee decided not to recommend this, if it, if it does not pass on the CPA portion, are they sticking with the not recommending the project then?
No. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Jody.
I'm sorry. No, they definitely think the project has to be done. That's why we made it clear that it's not that they don't recommend, they recommend this be funded with CPA. If it isn't funded, then I think they'll take another vote at town meeting.
Yeah, Christina Green just wrote in and said we will revote at town meeting.
Okay, so I would rec, I'll make a motion to not recommend, but it would be under the same guise. I also, we're going to have the Capital Committee prepared to also talk about if people don't like this and somebody raises the question of, well, we would just want to pay for it out of other free cash capital. We'll be prepared to answer that, which would pretty much wipe out any, any capital that we do, but people need to understand that's the implication.
Okay. So.
I'll, I'll second Mark's motion.
Okay.
To not recommend based upon the desire to fund through CPA.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of not recommending, but funding under CPA and subject to our revote if that doesn't happen at town meeting? All those in favor of that motion? Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. Mark?
Yes.
Hi. Okay. So now moving on to Article Seven. Jody, is this you or is this Dan? Reduce the amount raised by taxes in fiscal 2021.
I mean, I'm happy to have Dan walk you through this too. We have a spreadsheet.
Sure. So this is the analysis that we've been looking at. You know, we had the $757,000 deficit. We're recommending cutting back budgets by over a half million dollars under Article Two, and this is essentially the plug to balance the budget.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, is there a motion to recommend?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Hi.
Thanks, Dan and your team for all the hard work making these numbers work.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're now out at Article 11. And I see Dr. Hiramath out there. So can we unmute him and he can present his article?
All right, I'm unmuted. Good evening.
Hello.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good. Good evening. My name is Chetanya Hiramet. I'm the resident of Patton Road and I have a citizen petition on Indigenous Peoples' Day. Native American history is American history. Indigenous Peoples' Day is a holiday that celebrates and honors Native American peoples and honors their histories and cultures. We had a great opportunity to follow the lead of what other towns have already successfully passed and implemented. Today, I'd like to briefly focus on the general timeline leading to this meeting and clarify the reason for the amendment. I've been thinking about the Indigenous Peoples' Day for a very long time. Last year, I had contacted the moderator on the day of the special town meeting about my resolution on the floor about the Indigenous Peoples' Day. It was acknowledged at the very beginning with a statement that it would be taken up at the very end after all the articles were discussed. Unfortunately, the town meeting was adjourned without considering my resolution. In 2016, in Massachusetts, the Cambridge City Council was the first city that voted unanimously to make a switch from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. They were followed by cities of Amherst, Northampton, Pittsfield, and Somerville. Prior to the petition deadline for the Westford Annual Town Meeting in March this year, I had contacted Cambridge City Council via general email listed on their website. However, I did not receive any response. So I went ahead with the signed petition and the text of the article on the warrant was a short and as follows. To see if the town will vote to rename the holiday that is celebrated on the second Monday in October from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. So the Westford Select Board unanimously voted for the article. Immediately that week, we were told that the town, by the town council, that the town cannot vote to change the legal name of the federal holiday. But the town could recognize the holiday as Indigenous Peoples' Day on the same day. So I had to amend the resolution. So puzzled by this, I tried hard to get in touch with the right people again. This time, luckily, one individual at Cambridge City Council was very helpful. I received multiple documents such as minutes, discussions, and process information. So I amended the article for the motion by adapting the long text based on the town of Amherst citizen petition. So briefly, I'm not going to read all that, but briefly amended Indigenous Peoples' Day article has eight whereas sections focusing on the background and two resolve sections. The first resolve section is about recognition and the second resolve, resolve section is about celebration. The Westford Select Board voted again on the amended article, but it was 3-2 with no comments. In June, the Select Board asked all the citizen petition articles to defer until the upcoming special town meeting without requiring the petitioners to seek new signatures. So I agreed. Last week, I saw my article on the town meeting motions and it's exactly as I desired. So the town council has clarified that the amended article will be the main motion at the town meeting. Over 100 cities, towns, and counties across the country have already adopted the Indigenous Peoples' Day. So it's important that we pass this article at the upcoming Westford Special Town Meeting. Please share your thoughts on the amended article before you take a position today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there comments from the board? Scott?
Can you ask, ask to scroll down because whereas
Yeah.
plenty paragraphs telling how bad a guy at Columbus was and that's, that's all I, you know, fine, but what I really care is what we're resolving to.
Okay, so I'm sorry, Scott, other, was there, we, we, Eric scrolled down. Is there any? Okay, go ahead.
That's, that's, thank you, Eric. I guess my, my question is one of confusion because if I had to look up or Google Native American Day, there is one. It's the last Saturday of September, recognized as early as 1979, I think, or something like California under then Governor Ronald Reagan. It's recognized in the It's recognized in Nevada, I think, North Dakota. So I'm kind of curious why we're creating a second day when we already had one to start with.
Dr. Hirameth, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, so basically, it was the United Nations who started it a while ago, and it was Berkeley in California who first adopted it. And right now, over 100 cities have already adopted it. About six, seven states have adopted it. And in Massachusetts, about five towns have already adopted. So I guess more people are going in this direction.
Okay. Um, other comments or questions from the board? Tom?
I'll be supporting this because I think there is a lot for us to learn and study and continue to reflect on with regards to the fate of Indigenous people in what is now the United States. And I think there's more for our students and more for our townspeople to reflect on there than I think. I think that's a very useful add, so that's my position.
Any other comments from the board? Scott?
I guess I just, I mean, as I read it, essentially, we're making, we have a very rich culture from Indigenous people. One of my, one of my first books as a kid, I read was The Goosecap Stories, which is the Abenaki sort of lore around their god Goosecap, and it's fascinating stuff and I'm a bit opposed, I guess, to the motion, but we have a resolution that because it basically persecuted and slaughtered that Americans, we want to give them a day of recognition, I prefer, was a case of we want to recognize their achievements, their culture, their significance, and that's why we're honoring them, but I guess we get the same place to the education process, but I rather, I rather, rather than one more positive resolution of recognition, unless one about suffering, but I guess so be it.
Mark?
Yeah, so I have a couple of issues. I don't know why all this whereas is necessary. I think Scott said it early on. It's like the whereas is not necessary if we're going to celebrate. So I don't know if that has to be, that has to be in here. So I'm just curious. And the second part is, you know, the reason I'm hearing that we're needing to do this is because Berkeley and California started it. There's some states that are doing it. There's five towns in Massachusetts that are starting it, so there's a trend going on and we should follow. And if those are the reasons that the petitioner is stating, that doesn't do it for me on top of why all the whereas and warfores and all of that.
Anita?
I did have a similar thought to Mark where I wasn't sure if we needed all of the text that's in this, but I understand it's not ours, our word, it's the citizen petition, petitioner's submission. But I would support this because I believe it's not about glorifying Columbus and we want to change the shift, we want to shift it over to the Indigenous people. So I would support that, but I don't know if there's any room for tweaking the length of this petition. I don't know if that's allowed or not.
Well, once the petition article comes to the floor of town meeting, like any other article, it can be amended on the floor by anybody. So if, if people wanted to amend it and, you know, take out the whereas clauses or whatever, that's certainly possible on the floor. If they wanted to add things to it, that's also possible on the floor. But this is, this is the way, at least for now, that it comes to the floor of town meeting. So that's to answer your question, Anita. Like, I'm also in support of this. I think, you know, in our, where we are today in society in our country, I think that it is important that that all cultures be given an opportunity to be explored and learned about in our society and in our schools. And, you know, I think as Scott said, it's a rich history and a rich culture that should be that are, that we should all be exposed to and that we should be learning about. So anyway, that's where I stand. Any further comments from the board? And hang on a minute while I look to see if there are any comments from the audience. I think the comment is for the next article and not this one. So, okay, seeing, seeing none. Is there a motion to recommend?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
This is awkward because I support the notion, I just don't support this particular document, so I think I'll, I don't want to vote no. I do support the idea. So I also guess I think I'll abstain.
Okay. Anita?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Mark?
Yeah, I'm abstaining for the same reasons. The notion is fine. The explanation and the whereas do not do it for me.
And I'm in support, so it's three in favor and two abstentions. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we are at Article 12. Authorization, and I believe, and Jody, correct me if I'm wrong, Article 12 was a citizen's petition for the authorization for the Select Board to petition the General Court for an additional all alcohol premises license, and I believe that the citizen is withdrawing this petition. Is that right?
He is no longer interested in pursuing this, but because it is a citizen petition, it does need to go to town meeting and someone can make a motion to dismiss it. I did, I did talk to Gary Lovell, and he said that due to COVID, he thinks he's going to hold off for a while and see what the future holds.
Okay, so, um, I guess we can take a position, we can take a position whether there is a motion to recommend, excuse me, whether we would recommend a motion to dismiss this article. So is there such a recommendation?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Aye. Okay. Article 13, which is again, another citizen's petition. And I should mention that all of these were delayed from our annual town meeting to this special town meeting. And Article 13 is to clarify the memorandum of understanding between the town of Westford and Westford Community Access TV. I am not sure who is, who is going to be speaking to this?
Is Ray, is Ray out there? He was the petitioner.
He was the original petitioner.
Yes, I'm, I'm here.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to address the Select Board. I'm Ray Mascola of Ted Adams Lane. This petition was created by several members, several of us as members of Westford Cat back in January of 2020, when there was a question regarding Westford Cat providing local news. There was a question, an issue about the news function of Westford Cat by the previous board of Westford Cat. So the members back in January put together this petition and is to clarify the member, the memorandum of understanding between the town and Westford Cat, particularly sections three and four of the MOU regarding services. And the petition is to affirm that Westford Cat has the responsibility to cover and report on local news of our community with a professional journalist as part of the Westford Cat staff. We put this together back in January based on the situation at the time, and we were, were presenting it forward for the town meeting in October.
So I guess I have a question, which is now that the situation from January has changed dramatically. You know, the reasoning and the rationale, I guess, why this article, this petition article is still needed is what I'm trying to understand.
The reason is that
And that's not to say I'm not in favor of it. I just want to understand the reason.
Sure, sure. When the MOU was created, I guess a few years ago, I wasn't involved at all. The, the section three and four regarding services didn't explicitly, for some reason, describe the, the main function of Westford Cat, which is to provide news. And so the previous board emphasized the MOU and what was not there. You're right, the board, the new board has taken over and the issues that occurred before don't exist, but what we're hoping is that through this petition, we affirm and clarify the MOU to show that under services that Westford Cat has the responsibility and the authority to cover and report on local news, which is not clear in the MOU, and we're trying to make it clear through this petition.
Okay, okay, thank you. Comments from the board? Tom?
So for those of you that are not following this closely, the memorandum of understanding describes sort of arrangement by which the fees collected from the cable from Comcast and Verizon are entrusted to Westford Cat to provide a series of services. I guess, I don't know if this is a question or concern. I mean, obviously, the news is really important. We've heard that loud and clear. We've got a great group of people working on that now. I guess just specifically about directing, I guess, the reopening of the MOU or the renegotiating of the MOU and adding these services without changing the funding mechanism at the same time. I guess I just worry anytime we give any nonprofit sort of an expanded mandate that if, especially if it includes a funded professional journalist, it's going to be a substantial change in the mandate in terms of what they're required to do under the MOU. And the funding formula isn't changing, I don't think, according to the MOU. So I guess I'm, my feeling is what the current board is doing is excellent and very much we know in the community interest. But I guess I do have a concern about changing the mandate, the official contractual mandate of what they're required to provide without also changing the funding. And so that's my, that's my question, I guess, and concern when I'm thinking about this.
Tom, if I could respond, the professional journalists exist now. The, the question is that, for some reason, way back when, I'm not looking to change any funding, just to clarify the services where, for some reason, way back when the MOU was created, it didn't explicitly state that among the services is the, is the, which to me is the main function of Westford Cat, is to, is to cover and provide local news for the community. And that's the, the focus of the petition, not to, not to focus on any issues to do with the funding.
Anita?
I had a few different comments and questions related to this, and first, I just want to say, I'm so glad that Westford Cat is in the direction that it's in and that news has been reinstated. I think it's great because we don't have a lot of news coverage and sources here in town, but I do have a couple of questions, like I mentioned. One was that I noticed that we, you know, the inclusion of a professional journalist here that's listed here, there are no other specific positions that are currently listed in the MOU. And so I feel like it's kind of weird that we're calling out this position, but we're not calling out any of the other ones that make, you know, that run the services and stuff for Westford Cat. Another thing I, a question I had was just that I feel like clarify the MOU is kind of fuzzy, and with all of the other warrants or, you know, all the other articles and stuff that we have in the warrant, it's fairly specific language. So I feel like it might be helpful, or it would be helpful for me to understand more specifically what that language is that we want clarified and like what it looks like specifically. And then my third, my third issue is a little bit kind of bigger in that I feel like, and maybe it's kind of related to the, to the language, but, you know, we, in the MOU, it specifically says, you know, government meeting coverage for planning boards, select board, and school committee. And I feel like news is just a little bit bigger or a little bit more vague, and then also I feel like it's kind of encroaching on the territory of the board of Westford Cat and the direction of Westford Cat themselves. And I wonder, and maybe Tom can speak to this, but like, is news in the Westford Cat bylaws themselves where, why does it need to be included here in the MOU with the town? Does that, does that make sense?
Sure. First of all, you know, the professional journalist is not the focal point. It was the focal point then because it was a question about the employment of that person. The, the, the focus really is since the, under services, just one of, the main function of the, of the Westford Cat is certainly to cover all of the meetings that your, your board and others. The other function is to simply provide local news. I remember one of the meetings in the past, Mark talked about the fact that the regional newspapers don't provide local news anymore. And Westford Cat does provide that in addition to reporting on all the boards. So the focus really is not, is simply that the services include what it already states in providing coverage of the boards, but also that it covers local news. As you will see, we're not looking to to expand anything, but just to affirm the MOU that it covers, that it, that it includes local news, which wasn't clear in the MOU.
So I guess now, I'm sorry, now I guess I really am confused, I am confused because, you know, your motion says clarify the memorandum of understanding between the town of Westford and Westford Community Access TV, particularly sections three plus, three and four, et cetera, et cetera. So when I read clarify the memorandum of understanding, I guess I'm reading this, that there is particular language either that you wanted to add, amend, modify, or something to clarify the memorandum. But I don't think that you're saying that you want to change the memorandum right now or clarify or amend it in any way, so I'm, I guess I'm, I really am confused at this point.
Andrea?
What we're trying to, to accomplish here.
What we're simply trying to accomplish, this, again, this was put together in January when the situation was different.
Right.
We're simply trying to include that local news is part of the services of Westford Cat. If I could make it that succinct, that's what the petition is trying to put forth.
Tom?
Just one, one idea, Ray. It's almost like what you're, what we're looking for here, maybe, or what you're looking for here is maybe a resolution in support of including local news in the offering of Westford Cat. I guess I'm a little bit stuck on, so are we directing the town, so the MOU is a contract between the town and the Westford Cat Board of Directors. At the time, it's negotiated. And it seems like those are the two parties that are responsible for negotiating and agreeing on that. And so I don't, I'm wondering how it works if, if there's this motion passes. I don't know if the authority exists in town meeting to direct an independent body, which is the Westford Cat Board of Directors, and the Board of Selectmen to enter into a negotiation with a specific caveat or specific requirements.
I think when we put this together, Tom, we heard that the MOU couldn't be changed. And there was a lot of controversy over providing local news at the time, which was the genesis of this petition. And it's going forward, and it, and as we read through the MOU, there was a gap in terms of services that didn't specifically talk about providing local news, which is what Westford Cat does on an ongoing basis.
Mark? And then Jody?
Remind me, Tom, what is the, what is the, when does the current contract expire?
I think we're a couple of years in. If I remember correctly, we've got two or three more years on it.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we're So I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we're better off. My guess, Ray, is that we all absolutely support the idea of having local news. I'm not sure any of us would disagree with that. And I'm wondering to Tom's points whether we're better off waiting for the contract expiry and getting, you know, entering negotiations at that point in time to kind of get to all the points you're trying to get to. And I think that we would all like to get to as well without doing it in a way that may be fraught with some other issues. You certainly have all of our support. I'll speak for myself. You certainly have my support for this. And that's why we made the changes that we did.
Yep, I understand.
Hold on, Ray, Ray, hold on. Jody?
Yes, so the MOU is through December 30th of 2024. And I would say I do agree with Tom Clay that a resolution would be what you're asking town meeting to do and to, you know, share that with the board of WCAT and the select board when they renegotiate this because you can't change the agreement now. So I just wanted to mention that. I think that's, if I were you, I would have that resolution ready, typed up and to the moderator. And then the town knows what action you're looking for.
Okay, I, I agree with that approach. Yeah, I knew the MOU was a long way.
Wait, wait, hang on a minute. Scott?
Well, I saw, I'm agreeing with Tom in that certainly we all want the news content. That was, I think that is important to put into the MOU. My concern is that we are basically requiring, as part of a contract, the, yes, tenure of a job within Westford Cat, which I think it's an important one. I'm glad we, we have kept it. But your revenues are kind of untenable, given, or uncertain, I guess, given, you know, current funding mechanisms. And so until we know that you've got a really solid cash stream forever, forcing you to have a certain professional on staff that might require everything a different professional seems to really be tying your hands behind your back. And I think we'd be happy to, I'd be happy to saying, we watch your local, local news, period. And certainly I would encourage a professional journalist, but you know, not make that part of a contract with you.
So it sounds like what I'm hearing from, from the board is that, obviously, all of us support Westford Cat. All of us support the coverage that Westford Cat gives, you know, to town meetings, to events, to local news. And, you know, I think we have demonstrated that we all want that to continue. But that this petition, we all have concerns with this petition article for various different reasons. And that the preferred way to go would be a resolution at town meeting. And I think that's what you're hearing from us, Ray.
Okay, I'll do that. I'll have it prepared. I'm actually talking to the town moderator tomorrow.
Okay.
Thanks, Ray.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. So in terms of what is the board's pleasure? Do we just want, do we want to just hold on this and see what resolution comes forward before we take any vote? Or is the pleasure of the board something else? Tom?
I think if we can leave it open until we see Ray's language. I'd like that if that's a possibility, just because I don't want to signal that we're somehow not in favor of news by voting no on something that's really a procedural issue.
I think that's fine. We can certainly leave it open. There's nothing compelling us to act tonight. So why don't we do that? Thank you very much, Ray.
Thank you.
Okay, Article 14, a resolution to promote clean energy and reduce fossil fuel use to achieve the Commonwealth of Massachusetts limit of net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2015. This is a resolution. And I don't know, Beth or Carol, which one of you is going to speak to this?
I, I think I'm going to start. This is Beth Perkins. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I'm a co-chair of Westford Climate Action. And my co-chair, Carol, I believe, is also here, as well as other members of our committee. I think I need to start with the fact that climate change is one of the biggest and most challenging issues of our time. As we've all seen recently, we have extreme weather events and fires disrupting our lives really earlier and more powerfully than almost anyone expected. Although many of us are taking steps to change our individual behavior to fight climate change, the fight cannot be successful on an exclusively personal level. Our communities and our government need to be actively involved. One example I would cite for this is the aggregation contract, which, the electrical aggregation contract, which Westford Climate Action was in favor of, that has increased the renewable energy by 10%, starting with our new contract in January. To get every household and small business in town to take a step like that, even if they might have thought, well, that's absolutely the right and best thing to do, would have been very difficult. But the town did it. And that is an example of how our town government can make huge changes that are very hard to make on a personal, individual level. So that's why we're proposing our climate action resolution. We know Westford has taken many steps in support of the environment. We have been designated as a green community. We have purchased and preserved many large tracts of land and which successfully, successfully applied for many green grant programs. But you're asking our town to move to the next level by increasing our efforts to become more energy efficient, to convert from fossil fuel to clean energy as aggressively as feasible, and to form a task force to create a plan to work toward net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050 with intermediate goals. Now, we, I mean, Westford Climate Action, of course, we did not independently develop this 2050 goal. This net zero goal has been endorsed by large margins in our State House of Representatives, our state senate, and by our Republican governor, Charlie Baker, who's basically mandated net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. So over 30 towns in our area have passed similar resolutions, including Acton, Lexington and Concord. It's a challenging goal, but it's a feasible goal. Locally, our resolution has the support of Indivisible Westford, the Westford League of Women Voters, the West Energy Committee, the Conservation Trust, Sustainable Westford, First Church United, and our state representative, Jim Arciero. So tonight, we're asking for your endorsement for the Westford Climate Action Resolution, which will be voted on by town meeting on October 17.
Okay. Carol, do you want to add anything?
I think Beth pretty much said it all, unless you have questions that I can answer.
Okay, well, we'll find out. So are there comments or questions from the board? None? Ah, Tom?
This is just a, I don't know, this may be a question for other board members. I'm just looking at the charge to create a task force. You know, I think we can use all the help we can get to do this. But I want to make sure it ties in with other, you know, existing town efforts that serve many of these, many of these goals already. So I guess it's, maybe just this is a thought or a wish. If this gets brought into the town, that it's done with a real spirit of cooperation because there are already a number of, all the things you cited, Beth, that have been successes so far have come from, you know, existing groups within the town.
So I just, just from my perspective, I read this, we'll charge a task force. It actually doesn't say we're going to create a task force. It says we're going to charge one. So if there is an appropriate group here that is already existing in Westford, I see that, you know, giving that group this charge would be consistent with this resolution, if that is what we decided that we wanted to do. Or indeed, Tom, if it's so big a project, we think it needs a bigger group, we can also talk about that.
Good point, thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, so I'm not going to be supporting this in the way that it's written now for a couple of reasons. But I also agree with Tom. The Energy Committee exists already that has a number of people on it who have appropriate backgrounds to do this and have, already have regular meetings scheduled that are open to the public. So if anybody was going to do something along these lines, I'd certainly support having the Energy Committee be the go-to committee to do that.
Which ties into what I just said. It may be that if, it may be that that's the committee that we charge with this. Anyway, Scott?
Yeah, so I guess that the whole second paragraph, if this was a real article, which was not, if this was a resolution, I would observe that we got a task force in one sentence and a committee in a second sentence. I try to make it all, I don't think it's really important because the resolution is running a sense of the will of town. And, you know, I agree, I think we already have a committee for energy that may or may not be suitable for this task. That's our job as select board is to pick a committee. We can always pick that one. And I think they actually would probably appreciate, you know, some goals because right now we haven't already given them all that many. So hard, hard goals might be a good thing for everybody combined. The only issue here, and I will support this, I do find it problematic that we say upgrades town facilities and private homes. I think the town's got no business telling a private homeowner how to handle energy efficiency. In fact, I think it was a great example to show was the aggregation agreement that the town can coordinate households to achieve energy efficiency. But there was an opt-out clause. So I'm a little concerned about this company of private households to do something. But again, it's a resolution and the sense of resolution is, it's positive. And frankly, you know, as was noted, it's going to be state law. So it's only smart for us to get ahead, you know, ahead of it and start planning before 2040 and say, oh my God, how do we do this? So I'll be voting in support.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'd like to respond if I could.
Sure. Yep, go ahead, Carol.
Well, to respond to what Scott and Mark just alluded to, that we may already have the individuals in place. I would say that Beth and I had attended many, many energy committee meetings. And when we raised the prospect of the need for a group that would study our greenhouse gas emissions and plot out strategies and a timeline to do that, that there was very little interest. And they said, we don't have the, quote unquote, sorry for the pun, we don't have the energy. There are many times that there's not a quorum at that meeting. They said they have their hands full. And when I look to other towns, and I've been studying many towns across Eastern Mass, there are sustainable sustainability directors, which we're not asking for here. There are climate action committees that are appointed by the town. And Westford is really behind. If you go to Bedford, if you go to Acton, if you go to Belmont, to their climate action committees and their energy committees, we are really lagging behind. Although we have achieved some very admirable things. You know, the planet is, the planet is burning. You know, if you look at the front page of the newspaper, if you turn on the six o'clock news, we're talking about the future of our children. I can't believe that there could be any reluctance in a simple, in a simple request. We are not asking for money. We're asking for residents and town employees to come together, to find ways to collaborate and to study what we can do to move forward on this vital, urgent issue.
Okay, Mark, before I get to you, Emily, I know you want to respond.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted correctly.
Yes, you are. We can hear you.
I just wanted to echo what Carol said. We are asking for your leadership in supporting a citizen initiative, perhaps because we have felt that the nominal committee isn't doing enough. I mean, there's some other options. You could reconstitute the Energy Commission. We could put this goal in Jody's goals, and that might be a little bit more leadership-driven. But we're trying our best here to bring this before town meeting, to get a sense of the town, to move faster than the state is obviously going to adopt the roadmap at some point. But, you know, again, Mark, it's not like we're asking for money. And it's not like we're asking for the moon. We're just asking for a sense of the select board and a sense of the town meeting to move in this direction.
Okay, Mark, go ahead. You're on mute.
Every, every time somebody disagrees with something that's brought forward, it's, you know, shots are taken across the bow. It's like, listen, I got a couple of issues with this. Most notably, the fact, like Scott said, that it is, we're talking about private homes in the resolution. Okay, what I choose to do in my own home is up to me and not up to anybody else. That does not mean that I don't promote more efficient energy use. I'd also like to understand how we're behind. I'd like some specific examples of how we're behind other towns in what we've accomplished in green energy relative to how the taxpayers have invested in those things. So I'm looking at it as a resolution that's right in front of me and the words that are in that resolution. I wasn't asked whether I support the sense of the resolution. I was asked whether I support the resolution as is written.
Okay, I understand that. I think Carol can probably speak.
I didn't, I wasn't looking for a response. Thank you.
Actually, no, no, we're not going to get into a back and forth.
I think Carol can answer the other question, or Beth?
Yes, in terms of the question that you asked, Mark, which is how are we behind vis a vis other communities? That's a valid question and either Carol or Beth can answer.
Yes, I'd be happy to answer that. There are a number of towns that have gone towards more solarization of town buildings. There are towns where more electric vehicles are being, are being purchased. There are towns that are writing into their planning, planning board requirements for new buildings, orientation for future solarization, for future heat pumps. There are any number. I can, I would be glad to send you a list of advances in the direction of reduced carbon emissions and the towns that are doing these things. So I would be happy to do that. And one more thing I'll just throw in. The most recent Commonwealth of Massachusetts progress, progress report on energy in Massachusetts is the creation of 100,000 jobs. um on um energy in Massachusetts is the creation of a hundred thousand jobs associated with green initiatives and green industries. Um, so it is something that is, is good for us in, in many ways.
Thanks. Uh, Mark and then Anita.
Yeah, so a, a couple of points. First of all, the permanent town building committee and the Energy Committee are already tasked in any project on a piece of property in our town that's over fifty thousand dollars requires the input of the Energy Committee. And all of the things about heat pumps and, and efficient buildings, those are already baked into our uh policies. Um, as it relates to the jobs, I'd like to see proof that the clean energy on a net basis creates more jobs.
Anita?
Um, well, I support this resolution. I know that there are tweaks and stuff to the wording um that I would make as well. And but I, I feel like the, the point that Tom was making and a, a few of the others were about um charging an existing committee versus creating a new task force is something I also agree with um because I understand that, you know, the Energy Committee has talked before about how they had to lower the number of members that sit on the committee committee because they couldn't keep meat corn. But here you have six or seven organizations supporting this resolution. Can we get some of those people to volunteer for the Energy Committee? And um instead of creating a new entity, that doesn't make sense to me. I think that, that, that would be redundant.
Um, so um, I, I too support this resolution. Um, you know, uh, yeah, we can talk about tweaks to the language um and what it says or it doesn't say. Um, uh, I don't read it as compelling private residents to do something. I read it as to say it promotes uh clean energy and promotes it in, in town buildings and residential and private homes, but doesn't compel it. But I think, you know, um as for all the reasons that people have said where we are in today's society, the fact that, yeah, we are, you know, climate change is a huge issue here that we have to deal with. The state is already starting to eat, deal with it. As Scott said, let's start now and not wait until, you know, twenty forty. Uh, for all of those reasons, um, I, I support this. Um, in terms of whether we create a new committee, whether we task the Energy Committee, whether we, you know, uh, expand the membership of the um Energy Committee, I think that those are all questions and issues that we as a board can decide uh if this resolution um uh passes a town meeting. Um, and quite frankly, you know, even if it doesn't, if, if, if this is something we want to pursue as a goal um for the town, we can, we can also do that. But I think that those are questions that we can answer um at a later date. Um, so I do support this resolution and I have a comment from um Christina Green, who uh in answer to the question, how are we behind? Um, she wrote Chelmsford installed solar panels, panels on all of their school buildings about ten years ago. Um, so I just offer that as information. Um, Tom?
I, I'm ready to make a motion to recommend.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, um, uh, all those in favor? Um, uh, Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Nope.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. So four to one. Uh, thank you, um, uh, Carol and Beth and everybody who has worked on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um. Good night, have a good evening. Um, Article fifteen, um, to amend chapter fifty-one, section fifty-one point one A to give authority to the select board to shorten the polling hours for local elections. Um, I, uh, Jody?
Yes, Patty is having technical difficulties, so I'm going to hopefully speak for her. Um, I think really she's talking about those local elections where there's not a lot of turnout. And um with people now voting uh absentee or early, uh, there's um not a need to keep the polls open from seven AM till eight PM. It costs the town money. So uh, she's asking for this new bylaw that would allow the Board of Selectmen at her um suggestion to reduce those hours in certain elections.
Okay. So, Mark?
Yeah, just so I can continue to make people angry tonight. Um, in a world where we're trying to encourage people to get out and vote, I'm not quite sure how this does that. So.
Yeah, I mean, my, although my, my initial reaction was, you know, for somebody who was usually, you know, running to the polls at, you know, seven forty-five on a Tuesday night as she's coming home from, you know, out of Boston to work, to, to close the polls early certainly makes it more difficult for, for, for me to vote. But now as I read it, it looks like we aren't doing this as a, we aren't doing this sort of as a general uh across the board um um uh item, but rather we have the Board of, the, the Select Board has the discretion whether to reduce the number of hours the polls are open. So um, it gives us the discretion to do so. All that being said, um, I, I'm actually not all that comfortable with doing, doing that. I think that, you know, there are people who vote first thing in the morning and there are people who vote, you know, six or seven o'clock at night on their way home from work. And I would not want to disenfranchise those folks. So I wouldn't know how to reduce the hours or where to reduce the hours. Scott?
Yeah, I, I also, I also think it's sort of bad form. We're all elected. I think it's really bad form for the, a elected board to determine the rules by which it apart from the fact, I think it's sort of anti, it's just set backwards for democracy to restrict um voting options. I also think it's bad policy for a, like the board to take, change the hours of election.
Other comments, Jody? And then, um, actually, Jody, before you, Tom raised his hand. Let me let Tom speak.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just having the same reaction, especially without seeing a plan that would give people access. And I, I don't, I don't mean to pull on this discussion, but before I could support something like this, I'd have to know that there would be a late hours polling station somewhere that people could access, even if it's not all five. And I'd, I'd need to see some plan that may be comfortable that we weren't diminishing democracy somehow. Thanks.
Jody?
Patty has um requested to remove this article from the warrant.
Okay. Um, okay.
No objections?
I don't think we have any objection.
Okay, so thank you for your consideration.
Okay.
We'll remove it.
Okay, and, and thanks Patty for, you know, bringing it to our attention. Um, so Article sixteen, Jody, if I'm correct about this, we're gonna uh remove uh, which was an article to regulate blasting. Uh, are we removing that from the warrant as well?
We are. Um, you know, this came up over the last several weeks. We've actually had more complaints recently about blasting than we've had, I think in my twelve years here. Uh, so this is very complex and uh state regulated. We did not have a ti- have time to put this together. So we will continue to explore it. We are working with a group of residents and with the uh Graniteville materials uh people, and we may have something for the annual town meeting.
Okay, good enough. Thank you. Um, Article seventeen, um amend the town's general and zoning bylaws to reflect inclusive language amendments to the town charter pending before the general court. Gee, do we get to do this since our last article in which we were, you know, uh, we, we were made, uh, we made uh the same changes um to the town charter still hasn't been approved? Tom?
Despite our frustrations with uh, I guess the legislation that focusing on our problem right now. Um, I, I don't think this is controversial, or at least I don't want to cut off discussion, but I'd be happy to move to recommend.
Yeah, I don't think it's controversial either. My, my comment was just simply, you know, yeah, my frustration with our general court. You know, we get alcohol licenses approved before we can get charter changes approved. Um, but I should stop there. Um, yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll second Tom's motion.
Okay, um, is any further discussion? Um, seeing none, uh, Mark?
Uh, yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Anita?
Yep.
Tom?
Yes.
And I, uh, I, I also vote, uh, yes. And I think, I think this is what, um, Diane Wood was uh, who sent in a comment was referring to, and she would like to thank Emily Teller and Christie Bates for teaming with me on these efforts. Would also like to give a shout out to Chris Kato for assistance in some of the formatting changes. So. Um, and then our last article that we're uh discussing tonight is Article twenty-seven, which is a home rule petition regarding Rome Drive Extension. Um, if uh the, the board remembers, um, we actually talked about this uh in anticipation of a town meeting in March. These are the funds that are being held right now. Um, uh, as a result of having been uh recovered from um the developer of Rome Drive Extension. Um, town council had recommended the only way we can release these funds to the citizens who actually did uh the um um, who fixed their, their uh, their roadway and um did the betterments is through a home rule petition uh to um the legislature. And so this is just coming back because we didn't, uh, we never, uh, it did not come forward in June. So um, I don't know if there are uh further questions or, and um from the board or um uh any clarifications that are needed. Um, but if not, I certainly will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, so um, that uh concludes the articles that we are considering tonight. Jody, correct me if I'm wrong. All we have left now are um the zoning articles. Is, is that right?
I believe so, yes.
And, and we still have Westford, uh, uh, the, the resolution proposed by Ray that we have not taken any action on. Anita?
Jody, I think we're gonna see if we could use electronic signatures to, for this.
Yes, you cannot, you cannot. So I, I will need at least three of you to stop by the town hall tomorrow. Give us a little time to get this final, but maybe after twelve if that's possible.
You, you need a motion now to close the warrant, right?
You've already closed it. You can vote to sign it. You can vote to sign.
You need to vote to sign it. You're right. Mark, is that what you were going to raise as the clerk?
No, I was, I was just gonna ask. I can stop by in the morning, but um can't in the afternoon.
Um, you know, we'll, we'll be ready for you, Mark.
And I, I can stop by and, you know.
We'll work all night.
Well, if there's three others where you don't have to stay up twenty-four seven, that would be great. Because um um, it would be around um nine to nine thirty is about the only window I have. So if three other people can do it.
We'll get it, we'll, we'll get it ready.
I can, I can be there in the afternoon.
Okay, well, it's fine. We'll be ready.
Um, as I said, I can. So um, we need a motion um to sign um uh, to sign the warrant.
So moved. Actually, uh, could, uh, our, our beloved moderator has a question first.
Yes, the question is, did you vote on Article twenty-six? And I believe we did last week. Um, Article twenty-six is the petition article uh to sell sixty-three Main Street. And um I believe that we did uh vote on that and our vote was unanimous not to recommend. And Jody's shaking her head, so she, yes, so she is verifying that I've got that right. So there you go.
All good.
Um.
Uh, so so moved on the vote to uh vote the warrant.
Sign the warrant.
Sign the warrant.
Second, 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 second.
Um, all, all those in favor? Um, Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Uh, Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So uh, moving on, on to old and new business. Um, first is consider approval of the budget policy direction for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Um, we talked about this at our meeting uh last week. Um, I just, we took a week just to make sure everybody was on board with this and that nobody had any further comments or tweaks. Um, anybody have any further comments or edits or suggestions? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the uh fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget policy direction?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor? Um, Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Hi. Okay, um. Drafted the twenty twenty-one Board of Selectmen Town Manager Goals. Um. Comments, suggestions or edits uh to this? And, and I guess I would suggest maybe we do the same thing that we, as we did with the um uh budget uh goals is that uh we talk about it tonight, take some time to think about it and then vote on it at our next meeting. Um, so are there questions or comments? Mark? And then I, I have some too.
Yeah, no, no, I'd still, my only comment is I would like some more time to spend with this. I haven't spent sufficient time with it. So if we're not in a rush to do it tonight, I'd prefer to hold.
I, I'm, I'm good with holding too because I, I've got some uh questions um and concerns. I mean, um for, just as an example, um, um, where is it? Um, Eric, scroll back up to like um number four, I think. Um, yeah, so um, you know, it says support town and school safety task force charged by participating in the school community mental health wellness needs assessment. Um, I think we've done that, Tom. We've done the mental health um uh wellness needs assessment. So um, you know, things like that, there, there may be something else within that, you know, within the task force you want to add as a goal. But I, I believe that we have achieved that. And so I think that, you know, just as an example, you know, it should be modified to take that out. Um, and um, there were a few other things in here like that. So I think um uh if folks can get their comments uh or their suggestions um to uh, to Jody and Eric um uh before the next meeting and they can make um revisions and edits uh to send to us, uh, that would be helpful. And then we can go from there. Okay? Jody?
Carol Morse is asking to speak to this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see her. Yes, um. Uh, yes, um. Oh, go, go ahead, Carol.
Oh, actually, no, I was just uh typing in a, a comment. I didn't need to speak.
Okay, all right. Um, but Emily, uh, Emily Teller would like to speak. Emily?
I see her comments.
I'm happy to read my comment. I did the same thing. Um, I would be grateful, as does the Westford Climate Action Group, that the Select Board at a point addressing increasing green energy promotion and sustainability and addressing climate change all here in Westford and draft wording, you know, we'd be happy with draft wording, but we'd like to work on that also. Thank you.
Okay, I think it's, it's certainly something, you know, as a board, we can consider, you know, adding uh whether or not we want to add it as a goal to, for Jody's uh goals next year. Um, so uh with that, and also for the board members, if there are any other um goals or objectives that we want to add for Jody because she doesn't have enough to do, um, you know, let's uh, you know, feel free to, you know, make any suggestions and we can talk about them at our next meeting. Okay, um, with that, um our annual town manager performance review. Um, so the uh, the, the Select Board um met earlier this evening and um every year in September, we uh review our town manager's performance. Um, and um this year has uh, the board certainly uh agrees, has been a particularly challenging uh year for our town and for our town manager. Um just so the public knows, uh, we uh evaluate our town manager on uh ten different uh criteria. Um, and um, one of the uh criteria is um the ability of our town manager to deal with uh uncertainty and changing conditions. And I don't think anybody would argue that And I don't think anybody would argue that this year has not been a year of uncertainty and changing conditions. And as a board, we all feel that Jody rose to this occasion and met all of the challenges. She met them with qualities of leadership, innovation, compassion. She has worked tirelessly to keep our town operating, to providing public services and to keeping us all safe. And as a board, I think I speak for all of us and I'll certainly give everybody an opportunity to say what they would like to say. But I think I speak for all of us when we say that we believe that Jody's performance has just been exceptional during these times. Just a couple of things. She's certainly met the challenges with creativity and innovation that was seen in our ability to hold a town meeting on the WA field this summer. There are still, probably the majority of communities still have not held town meetings, and we're now planning for our second one. While there are towns who haven't even had one, and there are also many towns in the Commonwealth that haven't even opened yet. She's certainly kept her finger on our budget process. She was able to realize $200,000 worth of savings in our health insurance by getting that by, through reimbursement from Blue Cross Blue Shield. And she has certainly stayed up to date on the barrage of guidelines and regulations that came out weekly, if not daily, from the state and federal government and then adjusting our response accordingly. And finally, what I would like to comment upon, and what I think everybody in this town should know and understand, is the genuine care and compassion that Jody has for her staff, for the town and for its residents. I don't think that this can be overstated. Throughout the pandemic and even today, Jody's primary concern and her primary priority is keeping us all safe. As a board, Jody, we want to thank you for the countless hours that you have given to our town over the past year. We recognize that it's been a toll on you. We recognize that it is probably impinged upon your personal life at times. But as a town, we're so very fortunate to have you and to have someone with your experience, with your caliber and your skill as our town manager. And so thank you very much from the Board. And I would, you know, if anybody else would like to speak and to add anything, please, Scott?
Yeah, so two things. One is I wanted to go back to a day before COVID, which we've all quite forgotten, but budget brings at the Williams School back in, I think, last October someplace. We knew it would be a challenging budget requirement. And the proper head, the department head got up and said, I've got a budget that's really, really tight. Here's what I'm going to do with that budget. Here's how I would improve what I give the town with that budget. And so not a single person used that as an excuse to say, here's what I can't do. Every department head said, here's what I'm going to do and I'm going to make things better. I think that that's something that they learn from the top and our residents really appreciate. The attitude Jody's instilled in her staff. It's a can-do attitude, not a can't-do attitude. The second thing I would just mention is, you know, during COVID, we didn't have a, we were staffed correctly. We had the budget reserves we needed to have. We had the right staff, the right spots, the IT structure, all the stuff that went right, didn't happen right that day. It happened right because the past 10 years, it's been planned for this day where something like it would come. And when it came, we would be, we would be ready. So, yeah, apart from review this year, I think it's testament to her work over the past decade that when the stuff hit the fan, we had the right policies and people and, and funds and place to do with it. So thank you, Jody, for all of that.
Anybody else? Tom?
I just am lucky enough to see how Jody is sort of on 24/7, and especially when we're facing crisis times. She's, you know, looking for opportunities to help, opportunities to serve. And it's, it's all the time. And I know a lot of people have jobs where they work hard, but I think it's, I just want people in the public to know how committed Jody is to doing this work and doing it so well. And the other appreciation I have is during COVID times, we also, I think we're challenged as a community from a sort of an awareness and sensitivity point of view. And I only ever had from Jody, the sense that this is another opportunity for us to improve and a way for us to listen and a way for us to grow. And I just, I just want to make special note of that. Obviously, COVID was the big crisis that we faced that Jody helped lead us through, but there were other things going on at the same time. And somehow she's able to walk and chew gum at the same time, even under tremendously difficult circumstances.
Anita?
Yeah, you know, so I'm just gonna add to what everyone else is saying, that being the new kid on the block and in the middle of a pandemic and national civil unrest, my onboarding process has actually been pretty smooth. Thanks to Jody because of her communication and outreach and really just to kind of echo what Andrea was saying about how much you, she, you just genuinely care. And you called me after my first Select Board meeting to make sure I was okay, which I appreciated and just periodic check-ins just to, just to have that person to talk to, to just kind of learn the ropes a little bit. I really appreciate that. And they really showed me how much you do care about the town and just everyone. It was just been, been so amazing. And I really appreciate all of you. Like, I don't know, I appreciate all that you do. This is what I want to say. Thank you.
And last but not least.
Who would have thought that I would be the last one, right? That's never, and Anita, thank you. We appreciate you too. Listen, so I won't echo everything else that everybody has always said, has already said, because it is all true. It's certainly how I feel as well. On top of all those other things, I will also add, and I've said this to Jody many, many times, I do not know how somebody can do this kind of job in this kind of environment. On top of all the things that people have already referenced, the rhetoric over the last year has also heightened to levels that are not comfortable, probably for, for any of, any of us. And you continue to just kind of like toss that aside and going to get past that and figure out how to get underneath really what people are trying to do and say and resolve it. Again, a skill I don't have. So, you know, it is, it is much appreciated. The town is best served by you and we're looking forward to having you for another 15 to 20 years. So thank you.
Well, thank you all very much. This is honestly very hard to sit here and listen to because, you know, I love what I do. I love this town. You all have been great and I want to thank you for all of your support and acceptance of all of our recommendations. Sometimes I've been surprised that you have agreed with some of the things we've brought forth, but you've been very supportive. And really, it's the staff. We have the best staff ever. The department heads are all committed. They all love their jobs. We love a challenge. This has been the most challenging year probably in my life, not just my career. But our people have, have really risen to it. Our number one priority is keeping our residents safe and our employees safe and our officials safe. And I think we've done a very, very good job of that. I, I want to, in particular, call out the public safety personnel who have managed to help us through this. And of course, all the other workers, highway and IT, people have bent over backwards to make all this work. But we're all committed and it's not, it's not just me. It's the whole team and I couldn't do it without them. So thank you very much. And I do want to just have a little plug. I read in the paper today that I believe there's only 35 towns that have opened, which is kind of interesting. And we've been open since June 22nd. So we're hoping to stay open through the fall and winter and we're here to serve the public. So anything I can do to help, that's what I'm here for. So thank you again.
Thank you. All right. With that, is there a motion to waive reading of correspondence?
So moved.
Second? Okay, everybody just raised their.
To adjourn.
Wait, no, no, first we have to wait. Okay, now, all right, that's unanimous. Now, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Time for entertainment.
Time for entertainment. All right, good night, everybody. Good night, Westford. Everybody stay safe.
All right.
Good night.
Good night.